Call a regular meeting. Planning and zoning? Order?
Not yet. We're going through regular.
Slowly calling through. I'll call. Michael King.
Here, still here.
Clint, are you still here?
Yep.
And.
I am indeed.
Okay. Still there. And Lauren, you are here. So once again.
Should have him here before they come and change his owning.
Once again, I'll seat.
One of the processes to. Define areas that they want to develop and then make recommendations to change the zoning to be more traffic to.
Or a seat Lauren. And Clint. First approval of meetings, meeting minutes. Like to make a motion to approve meeting minutes. Marshall.
Second.
Any comments?
I have no comments.
I actually had one. I need to find it.
Boy, absolutely. Absolutely.
When you go ahead.
You said somebody comments on a draft include. I had some given your comments.
And they were, they were in your packet.
Okay.
Yep.
And it was under. My comment is under report of staff. It's a sentence that I just didn't quite know what it meant. Which was page four, which is page six of the outline. Report of staff and that's the sentence that planning and zoning commission will meet as the steering committee for the P O C D will be held. On April twenty fourth, I'm not quite sure the verb.
Meeting will be.
How was that going to read really?
So planning and zoning commission will meet as the steering committee for the P O C D, a meeting will be held on.
Okay, alright.
It really didn't make any sense.
No, it did not.
I could not. So move to approve the meeting minutes. As amended.
All those in favor?
I wasn't here.
Right, so it passes. Now. The. Public communications. In one. And we do have some public communications.
Tom Olson, one eighty eight Crosswoods Drive. In knowing. I'm here representing the Complete Streets Committee. Just I'm, I mean, we, I was here two weeks ago with you to answer questions. I'm here again to answer any questions for your agenda item. If you desire, we are also in discussions with our chair. Brian Kent, we noticed that there were some discussions on the social media platforms in regard to the. Slipway on Route one at Route two fifteen up by the high school and. The reason this, it was not included in today's package, but it was in last week, your two weeks ago package in regard to the plan. On regard to the drafting of. The proposed. Bike ways and and sharos along Route one, which is a special effort that the. Committee tasked the contractor, this F H I to put together as a starting point for taking a look at bike and pedestrian. Areas. And this is not, it's if for this future discussions with the state in regard to how to improve. And control speeds and also for improved safety for both pass passenger. On pedestrians, excuse me, as well as bicyclists. And that's why this was the, the draft plan here at that intersection was their first. Recommendation that would be discussed in the future with the state, the state would ultimately have decision authority because they would be. Actually implementing any plans here. So it's really premature to be, you know, going through an effort to be inundating this town manager with, don't do this type of stuff at this point. It's, it's really very preliminary and it's included in the plan so that we, as a committee, we would have. Areas to take a look at as far as on what are the priorities for the town and not necessarily the details of what's going to actually happen. So I just wanted to point that out to you. I appreciate any time and standing by for your questions. Thank you.
Then we have. Communication from desegregate Connecticut correspondents. Can we all get a copy of that?
Right, that was, there were a couple of unanswered questions and and they responded.
Yes, we just look at that response. Alright, go to site plans. Going to four Pearl Street. Calling your name.
I'm trying to.
Slide it over just a little bit.
See if you can get it centered.
I brought extra copies of the site plan, the size. Spread them out at all or?
No, you know what?
We got.
Yeah. Can you, I'm just, I want to really zoom in on your site portion of it. Can you just shift it? Rather than the notes.
Okay.
There we go. Right. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Greg Fetis with Fetis Engineering. Professional engineer here in Mystic at seventy Essex Street. Representing the owner of the two buildings, parcel A and parcel B, two and four Pearl Street. And our objective here, we got a variance. For that little shaded addition between the two connecting. Basically, the two buildings. So we did get the variance and we're here before you for a site plan approval. For some rearrangement of first and second floor in both buildings. And that's kind of the, the, it's not a extremely complicated. Application, the addition is, there's not even a couple hundred square feet. But there's architectural drawings which I have with me also. If there's any questions regarding those. Believe we addressed all of the comments from staff. And. You know, it's basically the building takes up the majority of the two parcels, but it'll be one combined parcel at the end of the day. And one combined building at the end of the day. There's anything else you want me to touch on? We, we did see the. Motion, we're okay with it. There's going to be two residential apartments. On the second floor. Kind of shifting from what was there historically, at least on the. Four Pearl Street. And expanding the two Pearl Street second floor. Well, I don't know if there's anything specific. Staff would like me to address or if there's specific questions regarding, there's not, not a lot to talk about here. But happy to answer questions and Leo Roche is here. At the owner of the property, if you have any specific questions for him, be happy to address.
Thank you. So as noted, this is a pretty small addition between two Pearl Street and four Pearl Street. So two Pearl Street is what's shown up there is A. And four is parcel B. So parcel A or two has the florist. It has an empty retail spot. It has a mezzanine in it in existing conditions. Parcel B has.
Harp and hound.
Harp and hound. Harp and hound. So harp and hound is both on the first floor and then upstairs there is the kitchen and there is a function room. Okay? So. As, as noted, the proposal is to. With harp and hound, they're going to leave the kitchen upstairs. They're going to turn the function room into an apartment that spans the addition and comes into parcel A or two. Pearl Street, and then there will be another apartment. So there will no longer be a mezzanine in into Pearl Street. Okay, there'll be a full second floor. Parking is essentially a wash here with the removal of the empty storefront that's retail and the installation of the. Construction of the two apartments. Parking, obviously. Leo Roche owns across the street. There's parking over there that is available. Right, this is in the M D D downtown Mystic. That zone requires some public space. Although doesn't really give any criteria for it. So they're proposing a bench in the vicinity where the florist is going to be.
Touch the screen.
Don't, don't touch the screen. Touch the screen. So, so the two big issues here are, first of all, it's in the flood zone. Alright, so it's managing. Flooding events, a king tides during construction. It is making sure that the addition has vents, flood vents and elevation certificates. And then, while this is a really small addition, this is a complicated addition. There's very little space to set up for construction material. There's utilities in that space. It's, it's. Really needs to be an orchestrated, well orchestrated construction process. And, and that's, that's really, those really are the two big issues, the flood zone and, and construction methods. So actually on the plan, there's like a schematic, you know, a step, step by step generally of how this construction is going to proceed. I, if you've seen my draft motion, we're going to want that fleshed out before they actually start construction, you know. How you're, you know, are you parking on the street? Where's the material going to go? You do just, just all of that where the contractor is going to park, that kind of thing.
Lauren, you want to start?
Sure. So the change is primarily just to the second floor, not really to the second floor.
Primarily to the second floor.
Sorry, second floor. Yes.
Yeah, so the. Or Pearl Street is getting rearranged a little bit, getting rid of the function room like Deb said. Putting the apartment, I think there was one there originally went to a function room. Now it's going back to an apartment. There is a floor plan they have to share with you, but. Basically, a good portion of parcel B and a smaller portion of parcel A is going to be a second floor, two bedroom. A unit, and then there's a one bedroom unit. That kind of spans back across into four also. But yes, most of the renovations. Or changes are on the second floor.
So there'll be three apartment units?
Two.
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 Okay.
Yeah, one, two bedroom and one, one bedroom.
So one up top and one on bottom?
No, they're both on the second floor.
Okay, that's, that's what I was getting to. So the first floor is largely unchanged except for closing the gap there.
Right, the harp and hound is expanding into that empty retail space. So there. I would say function, the number of seats aren't changing, but there, that function room is basically going away upstairs and then they're expanding into the retail. On the first floor.
That sounds fun.
Florist is to remain.
And that's, that's all I have for now.
The second floor, is that going to be connected? You know, pastoral also?
Yes.
It's, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, the, the floor plan.
Many, many pages of plans.
Yes, there's a lot.
I have no, no other questions. I just couldn't.
What is, what are the space being used for current? It's just got the electric service, that's it?
Between the buildings?
Yeah.
It's a, it's like an alleyway.
Yeah.
You know.
So in that, that electric meter is being relocated?
Yes, there's an electric meter here. That's actually kind of staying in the S two L.
Oh, okay.
There's not, alright, gotcha.
Yeah. Alright, I'm fine.
Clint, do you have any comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright. I commend your architect on squeezing in. Including the, the considerable elevation change on the second floors. What a chink of box that is. If you had to end up with a seven foot wide bedroom, so. But no, I, I think it's fine. I have no other issue.
Thank you.
You've seen, you said you've seen the motion?
Oh, yes, we have.
And. You want, it's okay, everyone's got that? Alright, so I will. Make a motion to approve. Plan S I T twenty five dash zero 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 two for a building addition at two and four Pearl Street, subject to the following modifications. Any modification to this plan imposed by other, another federal, state or local agency shall require additional review by town staff or the commission, whichever is appropriate. To a detailed construction plan. That protects the public shall be available at the pre-construction meeting. Three, the installation of flood vents shall be certified by a registered professional engineer. For an existing conditions elevation certificate and a final construction elevation certificate shall be submitted to the office of planning and development services prior to the issuance. Of certificate of site plan compliance and five technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Second. Second. Any others?
Oh, whoever's second.
Any other discussion? Let me do a discussion. I will wave, rewrite, be reading it and all in favor of the motion?
I.
Hi.
Alright. Pose, abstentions, and it passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Too bad we couldn't get those wires out of the way. Yeah. Open eyes too.
Big ugly pole there and that picture shows it perfectly with five hundred. Need a extra wire.
And then we're on to the complete streets and trail plan.
And so in the, the packet, I summarized what we heard last time. There's also a summary of the minutes. Steve had given me additional comments, so. I don't know whether you want to include any of those in, in what you're sending to the Parks and Rec Director.
So I did have a question based on what Tom said. I, I thought we were commenting on the package as received. It was draft. Yeah. But. Mr. Olson seemed to indicate that that's not quite your plan, or it may not be the plan.
It's, it's the plan, but it is not ready to be implemented. You know, it is, it's a plan. So there's many components to it at some point. There may be a project that addresses the intersection of here.
What I mean, if we have any comments whatsoever.
Absolutely. Yeah, if you, yeah.
I think we have the right to make them. I mean, it's, that's what we're here for. That's what we're asked to do.
But where does, so where does it go from now? Because I, I mean, I, I think our take on the plan was that. It was a really fantastic study. And a report on the study, but not the kind of plan that we would then put in.
It's not forcible at any.
No, no, this, this is just another tool for you to use when you are reviewing.
That's right. And that's, that's what I'm saying. And, and as such. It was like. Getting a hammer with forty pages of how to use the hammer. Instead of just saying, this is the handle part. So it, it, it was the, the in-depth of the study and exactly the background, everything was, the more I looked at it, the better it got. But the part that everyone needs is the part you had to dig for, and that was so, that was part of the problem. So where do we go from that part?
So just, just to back up a little bit, that, what you've described is how you are going to use the plan. Right?
Yes.
Um, it's possible that the Parks and Rec Department are going to use it in a different fashion. They are going to propose C I P projects to implement. You know, certain bike ways or bike paths or something. So, so just keep that in mind. I think one of the comments that you made was, you know, we'd really like to have like an executive summary or something of what, what the. You know, what are the recommendations here and then have everything else in the appendix? That's the sort of, you know, you can make those recommendations to the Parks and Rec Director. Okay? They will change it or not. It's his project as he sees fit. If, if it's not changed to your liking, I really think that. You know, the planners can pull out. These are the maps that you guys really need to pay attention to and, and bring those to you when we review development plans. It's much like. The previous plan, same thing. It was, you know, it was probably fifty pages long, but you guys only saw the maps when we brought them out.
Right.
Yeah, and we can do the same thing.
Okay. It would be, I mean, it seems like that's why we're working, we're hopefully making the P O C D more concise.
Right.
And, and it would be nice if there was something that, you know. Anyway. Does this get? But does this get rolled into the P O C D or is it just get referenced?
Um, it, it could be either way. It, it. What would you guys like to do? I mean, really?
I mean, it might be a useful tool when developing.
I mean, I would imagine it's, some of it, once it's adopted, will be reflected in the transportation plan within the P O C D.
But is it being modified?
So I think I, as I told you last time, I, our department had comments as well as public works and we have all sent those on to, to Mark Barry. He shared them with the consultant and Mark has said there are going, there are changes that are being made. Based on, on some of our comments. But, but again, you're not adopting this, you know, you're just providing your input into it.
And all I have, I could just. I'll come up with some other comments, but I think what I saw in there looked fine to me. I do have one more, which I guess is going to be a question. About something specific. So as long as we've got somebody here, we've got. Something I didn't know about bike boxes. Which is to enable a bicycle to turn left in front of traffic. I believe that's only usable if you're turning onto a one-way street that's going from right to left. Because otherwise, that was even the diagram, it shows it both ways, but. That would put the bicyclist on the wrong side of the street in this town. So I don't know if there's anywhere in this town doing this configuration. You just spent a page doing it. So. I'm thinking this is something that. We don't really want unless you know exactly where it would go and how it would work, because I don't know what that is.
All these different. In regard to different components that are in the, in this plan that have been provided. They're giving you tools as far as for consideration as you're developing future projects. And that's the intent here is that this would be a, one, a way. Of considerate for consideration, not a specific implementation aspect at any given intersection within the town. If things develop in the future, you'd have this toolbox of items as far as on how to approach. Improving pedestrian and bike safety. And this is one of the tools to provide safe, improve safety. That's what the bike boxes are therefore relative to marking pavements and that type of stuff.
Okay, then maybe my, one of my comments is. Part of the toolbox needs to include, as you do with any tool, the page of warnings. I'm kind of being serious about here's the only uses of this and where it shouldn't be used. And, and this might, this one jumped out at me as to. I'm thinking about other bicycle friendly places. I, I biked in Copenhagen and you stayed to the right and you stayed to the right and you stayed to the right. And so something that allows people to cut off to the left. And even had some problems on it, which is actually in here saying, I don't know when it's ever any good. So. Maybe there's some unique condition and maybe you need to go through the tools and say where it's appropriate and where it's inappropriate to use these things. Otherwise, someone that isn't us is going to look at it and say, oh, here's the thing. If there's a tool in the toolbox, somebody will pick it up and use it. It's like a weapon. They always get used. So that would be one that need to make it clear. If it actually works the way shown and. They need to step through them and say where, where not to use.
That's fair.
And right up front. Okay.
That's, thank you.
Do you have anything else? Close on this? That's all for now, I guess.
Wait, wait a minute. So. So, you know, in the memo ahead of this in the packet, I did bullets, right, that. Describe your, but Steve also had additional comments. I don't know if you want to. Steve, do you want to speak to those and do you guys want to put those in?
Yeah, well, I spoke briefly to.
Yeah.
At the first meeting and that was at the top of Ford Hill. There's a slip lane that goes right onto two fifteen and goes down. And just looking at the numbers, I mean, I, I think that intersection twenty five, twenty five thousand carts a day. So you figure half of them go one way, half of them go the other way. And, you know, so that's a significant amount of traffic and they're talking about making a. Heart rate with a light probably because they have now reconfigured the whole intersection there. So. I don't think that's a good idea, period. I think that you're sacrificing. You know, fourteen, fifteen thousand cars a day. Beautiful travel for the sake of maybe once a day, only during school, there might be some, a couple of kids crossing and I, I never see a lot of there.
Wasn't it your comment to look into that or to reevaluate it? Wasn't to, or was it to say?
I, I, I think it's a bad idea to eliminate the slip line. In addition. And I think on that same sheet they talk about, oh no, it was on another sheet. They talk about going on a continuation of Route one. That going into Mystic. You go down the hill and you make a right-hand turn and they're talking about putting in a. A, I guess a crosswalk there. I mean, that's a blind corner on a good day. And I don't think putting a crosswalk there. Is. Is a good idea at all. And it's supposed to get into the merit property, right? Yeah. And, you know, there would be possibly be one of those flashers or something that says it, you know, crossing or something, but. I don't think that's a good idea on any day.
Are we talking about where Flanders Road hits Route one?
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, as someone who uses that trail quite regularly, there is some solution needs to, we need to work on some solution for that spot.
Yeah, it just might not be at that very location because like I said, it's a, it's a kind of a blind corner and you're coming down a hill. You know, it's just, it just doesn't seem like the ideal location for, for that. And then, you know, I talked to George, you know, George is one of our neighbors is a big biker and, and I said, do you ever ride on Route one? And he's like, no. He says it's too dangerous. And I said, would you ride on it if it had a, a bike lane? He says, no, it's too dangerous. It's too curvy. It's too many blind corners. So the idea of, you know. Trying to make lanes. In dangerous places. Doesn't make sense to me when you have alternatives, you know, going down to fifteen and going, you know, and going that way into Mystic. I mean. He was like, yeah, he says, if I gotta go into Mystic, that's the way I go. And, you know, so I, I think the philosophy should be to encourage safe travel and not just put. Bike paths on dangerous roads just because, you know, there's, there's places we can. You know, edge people over and say, this is the way I want you to go. Anyway, that's my speech. Comments? Consensus? Anybody know what I'm talking about?
I know what you're talking about. I would have to weigh it because I just.
I mean, I mean, maybe you could add something more general like. You know, elimination of the slip lane should be further studied, you know, to make sure that it's safe. Or, or the crosswalk might not be in the, the proper location and further study is necessary to connect.
And I thought that's what my email.
And, and just make it a bit more gentle like that.
Yeah, rather than negate it because this is an engineering study, sightline study.
Right, right. Yeah, right, right.
And also a traffic study, say, what would the effect of?
Elimination of this, yeah.
Or modifying the slip lane, what would that do?
Yeah, cuz I'm telling you, I drive all that every day and it, and it works well, and to think that it would. I mean, that intersection never had a light at one time, I've been here long enough for that.
I, I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to bet if it was an always stopping, it still would. It would just slow everyone down.
It would.
But the, the number of cars that pass through an always stop is, is surprisingly enormous. Because everybody just moves, one car at a time.
Yeah.
So, that actually does work, so I think not having a light might have not been a bad thing. It's just that you're kind of hoping as you come down, come up that hill that you make the light.
Yeah.
But otherwise. Roundabout stop signs, they work quite well.
I think a lot of these, a lot of these can, don't, don't have to be either or, we can have some and, right?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, bike lanes and physical traffic calming measures, you know, restriping to. Encourage people to slow down by making smaller lanes or, you know. Other things, make bikers safer or traffic slower, right?
Yeah, that same plan actually eliminates a sidewalk going up Ford Hill. And puts in that ten-foot.
Oh, it's in the ten-foot.
Yeah, and, but that's that grade, right, that's that road grade, so. You know, I, I saw the Kitch High School runners, you know. Running along and stuff like that, that would put them literally in the street, you know, running, instead of on the sidewalk. So, you know, things like that, just. Kinda don't make sense.
Is that the top of the hill?
Yeah.
They wouldn't make it, if they're coming up the hill, they'll turn off to that, it wouldn't make it that far, they're running. They would turn off to go into a cutoff that takes you to uh, to the new middle school. And go up to the school.
Well, that's where they, yeah, but that's all gone, I remember, you know, that would all be gone.
No, I'm saying there's, there shouldn't be any pedestrians going to the school or bicyclists going to the school at that point.
Yeah.
Because we bypassed it. Badly, but we clearly bypassed, it's beautiful rocks and boulders and things, so maybe that part's not the problem. That's, that's worth evaluation.
I wasn't here for the conversation, but I would like a little bit, if someone could. So this is being done by the Recreation Department of Recreation. There's a comment that we have on there that needs to focus more on transportation and less on recreation, I'm just thinking, considering the source. Said, um, it's, it's an interesting comment for our group to be making. Considering that recreation's the one developing the report.
They are, but it was supposed to be our whole trails plan, everything, so.
Trails for uh, for recreation, I don't use trails for transportation.
Yo, that was a comment that was, that was sort of like more of a comment than question as to why. It was being called a transportation.
Is it being called a transportation?
It's the complete streets and trails.
Yeah.
Small streets.
That complete streets doesn't even talk to recreation, it's just that it includes it.
Wasn't here for it, so that's why I was just wondering why we're poking at that bear.
Yeah, that's, that's our, that's our title, and it's. It's a good title, but need to make sure it's not just focused for recreation, the people who can make it up a hill. Anyone else? Need anything else from us?
Nope, I can add those two bullets about, you know, study and reconsider locations and.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
And so that's, and then does it? Come back to us, so we're just providing comments.
Providing comments.
On a draft.
That's exactly right, I, the next step is that at some point it will go, once the changes have been made, it'll go to the council for adoption. Then that's it, then we'll start using it.
I'll throw one more, it, it was just generals that the color coding. Didn't work. Does not work well, the color coding of this, of the striping tell you which, for, for some of their, their line work on the maps.
Okay, oh, 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 yes, we, our um, Public Works and I can.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's a comment already.
Right, use textures, you smell, the color coding, the purple, it looks like the blue, looks like the red.
And the light gray and, yeah.
They all kind of mush together, and so I can't even tell what they're.
Right.
You can tell, but you have to study it closely, and you shouldn't have to. Like you also consider using widths as part of the information part.
Yep.
All the same line.
Yep.
Alright. Business? General permit for water resources, construction activities?
State sent to, to this commission, conservation and to the Northern Lightline Agency. Just the, the work that's being done on I ninety five. On the Gold Star Bridge.
Oh. Okay. We don't have any action on that. No report on share? Visiting? For the commission?
I um, I did attend the Connecticut Bar Training that was on the twenty second, I believe it was. It was fantastic, it was all day long, but it was, it was eight to four P M, but it was fantastic. Sorry, nine, nine, nine to five.
We have the document, I mean, if, if anybody.
Yeah, it, it came with a nice uh, big book of.
Of court cases and how they apply, yeah.
Oh.
Very good stuff.
Okay. Great.
I'll lend out my copy too, if you want.
Great, nightly reading. Forty staff?
Okay, a couple of things, um. So, I, I, at the last meeting, Bryce um let you know that we have a housing grant to look at middle. Like missing middle housing, right, um, we are, we have thirteen um respondents to the R S P. We whittled it down to three, and we're going to having, going to have interviews on, shoot, I think it is. On the, oh man, hang on, we're looking for a, a Planning and Zoning Commissioner to sit on it, um, but hold on a minute. It will be from eight thirty in the morning till one o'clock in the afternoon. And, let's see. It is on the twenty fourth, April twenty fourth. Anybody interested, available between eight thirty and one to interview? Three respondents.
Yes, it's a team, team thing.
It is, there'll be three from um Planning and Development Staff, um, one person from the COG, because this is a D O D grant. That's actually being processed through the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Government, so it'll be one representative and one. Representative from Planning and Zoning, because we do anticipate there's gonna be recommendations about zoning.
And we've got a special meeting at five thirty that evening as well, right?
Yes, we do.
So it's gonna be, gonna be O P, whoever does it.
That's a P O C D workshop day.
And I'll do it if no one else can. I vote for you.
One o'clock. Eight thirty to one o'clock.
Eight thirty to one o'clock.
You're capped at one commissioner?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, so we have another opportunity, several actually. So um focus groups for the P O C D are scheduled, meetings are scheduled for the twenty third and the twenty eighth, that's a Wednesday and a Monday. Um, each day we'll have two meetings of, of groups, one from three to four thirty and one from five thirty to seven. They'll, they'll all be at Thrive, and we're looking for at least one commissioner. To attend, not to participate necessarily, but to listen, it will be a facilitated discussion led by Jeff Davis. Um, so, I, I can send those out to you, you don't have to look at your calendars right now, but we really would like to have one. At least one commissioner and no more than. And so, you know, if, you can just do one, you don't have to do one whole day, you can just do one session, perfectly fine. Um, and probably best, actually, if we sort of spread you guys out, and everybody just does one.
Yep.
Okay, we'll, we'll send that out tomorrow.
As it turns out, I'll, I'll just say now for the five, five o'clock meeting on the twenty fourth.
Uh huh.
It's also my daughter's birthday, so it's not happening. I'll think about that. Yeah, my wife brought balloons here once, right? Okay, is that it?
That is.
Okay.
And just, the, the one other thing is to add the May eighth, I know we talked about this last time, but just as a reminder. Make sure it's in your calendar, the May eighth date, date five thirty to seven thirty, that is the, that's gonna be the, the public meeting for the P O C D.
Five thirty at Thrive, P O C D, got it.
Lots going on.
Yeah.
Will there be anything for the public to review ahead of that meeting, or are they just coming to sound off?
You know, I'm not sure yet, they certainly can review your meeting on the twenty fourth, because that's the information that's going to be presented. At the public meeting, it's gonna be presented to you all for your input and changed if necessary or. You know, additional information added, um, so, yeah, if it's ready well before, we'll have that up on greater ground.
And so.
And this is just where we are now, this is the baseline report and the results of the survey.
Okay, so. So I'm understanding, the twenty fourth is our meeting, our kind of informational hearing on it. Then you said the twenty third and the twenty eighth, so twenty eighth afterwards is a focus group.
Yep.
And then the eighth is the public hearing.
Public meeting.
Public meeting, so between the twenty eighth and the eighth, if we learn or hear anything. Do we have the opportunity to address that, or is this going to be one of those public hearings where? They just sound off and we sit here and then we leave?
No, okay, so, again, the, the meeting with you as the steering committee, you know, it's an interaction between you and, and Horstley Wood. They're gonna present what they've learned so far, you can ask questions, ask for more information, whatever. They will modify that, that information, and that's what will be presented to the public on May eighth. The focus group information is probably not, it, it's not going to be wrapped up into the May eighth meeting, it is going to be. You know, identifying issues that folks in the community see that need to be addressed by the document, and that will. Be part of like the next stage of writing here.
Thank you.
And you'll send some information when and where.
Yep, yep, and there will be food where appropriate, yes.
And we'll have cake on the twenty fourth, just in case.
Yeah, we will.
Balloons and candles. Hey. Else, so A S P report, application update? Nada, nada?
It's really quarter day. That can't be right.
Yeah, it is, it's quarter delay.
About that.
Actually, it's, yeah.
Second.
You know, don't get a gavel.
Got to put it out.
Just don't rate.
Sequin. Thanks all, take care.